We have several board members who will be here momentarily. We do have two board members who are out of the country. Mr. Moon and Mr. McElveen will not be joining us tonight because they're out of the country. But we very much appreciate getting a report on school accountability and project momentum updates. We have with us Francisco Duran, Chief Equity Officer, Mark Greenfelder, Executive Director of the Office of School Support, Betris Huffman, Director of the Office of Student Testing, and Brendan Menuie, Executive Principal of Region Two. I also want to acknowledge that we have four principals with us tonight as well. Sean DeRose, Principal of Glasgow Middle School, thank you for being here. Amy Miller, Principal of Saratoga Elementary School, Clint Mitchell, Principal at Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School, and Angela Thompson, Principal of Newington Forest Elementary School. So, thank you all for being here and we'll look forward to hearing from you in a bit. So, just to set the stage on two things, I had sent out an email to everybody saying that we were going to try to limit the comments tonight. This is in keeping with what the Governance Committee has recommended for long-term, and this seemed like a good opportunity for us to start that practice if we could. This is a very meeting presentation, and I know that there are a lot of questions. We're trying to finish up by eight o'clock because we do have county staff joining us at eight o'clock to go into our second topic. So, with everyone's agreement, I would like to see if people will agree to this, that we will keep our comments and our questions to three minutes. In other words, if you can make your comments and say, "I have three questions," there are one, two, and three, and then the staff can keep track of that and then answer, and that will be the end of round one. Everybody can have a second turn if they need a second turn, but that way we will be sure and get to everyone. Do I have concurrence for that? Does that seem...all right, good. Okay. Well, thank you. And also, tonight's presentation is primarily informational. Probably some of the things that are in this report will raise questions about changes that you might want to make or changes that we might advocate for. Staff in particular want us to understand what is right now. So, that is going to be the thrust of this conversation. They have some ideas on moving forward as well. But with that, Dr. Duran, are you going to start us off today?
All right. Thank you. Good evening. So, as Seven said, we have three main outcomes tonight. We really want to make sure that you, as you know, we have new standards of accreditation, and our federal accountability system and our SAE system are more aligned than they had been in the past. So, we really want to make sure that you have a good understanding of that. We want to review some of our successes of Project Momentum and some of the next steps for moving forward, and thank you because you've helped us to really expand that office and supporting more schools. And then, we want to talk about one potential, not for a decision, but just share with you something that we're looking at as another potential need, and that's how we best support our secondary schools. And you'll see that connected to some of the SOA Standards of Accreditation requirements that we're seeing. So, that's our outcomes for tonight. It's informational. We look forward to answering, asking any questions you may have about this. We also want to remember that we do have our legislative work session next Monday where we can get a little bit more into what advocacy we might have for some of the changes. We thought it was very important that we understand what the new system is before we decide what changes we might want to make. So, we're trying to separate that a little bit, but we certainly will take any ideas you may have for next week. So, with that, I want to turn over to Betris, who is going to walk us through what those state and federal accountability systems look like, some of those changes, and what the implications are for our work moving forward.
Great. Thank you so much for having us this evening. And as we start out, just a reminder here that within Virginia, we, our schools are held accountable in a number of ways, two of which we will be highlighting in relation to the school supports that are offered as well this evening. So, the state accountability system, standards of accreditation, as well as the federal accountability within Virginia, the Every Student Succeeds Act, those are the two areas that we'll be looking at within that broader context of school accountability. So, under the new revised standards of accreditation, we're just revised this past academic year, we are now measured on currently eight academic and non-academic indicators for each school. So, you'll see three academic, English, mathematics, and science are measured for all schools, as well as two achievement gaps, gaps for English and gaps for mathematics. And then, in non-academic or student engagement and outcomes, chronic absenteeism and dropout rate are new introduced under the new system, as well as graduation and completion index is a carry forward from previous systems. You'll notice in this image that, and this is the way that the school quality profiles on the state website presents the data for each school, it's color-coded to represent a level of performance for each and every separate indicator. So, schools are being measured overall for their accreditation rating, but they're also being monitored very closely for each of these individually throughout, from year to year. So, I'll be walking you through very briefly each of those sets of indicators, as well as how our schools performed, and then Mr. Greenfelder will be following up with the supports that we're offering. So, first, for our academic indicators, a reminder on those calculations that were shared with you in a previous work session in more detail. The success for students is now being measured not only on pass rates, but also looking at student growth from year to year and looking at L-progress, English learner progress, from year to year. So, these are additional ways that schools are able to represent and indicate that they are supporting their students from one year to the next. And all of those academic ratings are then used to identify a Level 1, 2, or 3 for that school. Additionally, then, for the achievement gaps, we are measuring gaps in that same way, again, looking at growth as well as pass rates, for seven separate reporting groups. Those seven separate reporting groups are each assigned a Level 1, 2, or 3 that then help to determine overall for the school whether the school will be assigned a Level 1, 2, or 3 for English and mathematics gaps. So, our schools overall, you'll see at the bottom of the slide, have only one school within Fairfax that was assigned a Level 3 performance for mathematics overall, only one school with a Level 3 for English achievement gaps, and we had six schools with achievement gaps for mathematics at a Level 3 rating. At a very, very high level, which will be shared in more depth, for all of those schools that had a Level 3 or a Level 2 rating, additional supports are in place through the region support teams, the Project Momentum team, as well as the Expanded Office of School Support. And then, additional professional development and resources are offered to all schools to assist them in monitoring areas that may be developing gaps. Looking at chronic absenteeism, again, this was one of the new metrics that was introduced for this year. Students here are being reported when they miss more than 10% of the academic year. Those students are determined or deemed to be chronically absent, and then the percentage of the student body that is chronically absent is used to measure overall for the school a Level 1, 2, or 3. Students must be enrolled at the school for a majority of the school year to count for that school's rating, and the absences are based on full-day absences. So, those are just a couple of reminders about how the calculation works. We have no schools this year that were a Level 3 rating for chronic absenteeism, which, considering this is a new indicator and not something that we had been monitoring as explicitly in this way, is a real celebration. Despite that, we do have in place plans and ongoing collaboration to ensure that schools that are perhaps having areas identified for need for chronic absenteeism have an opportunity for professional development and resources to support that work. Moving on to the last set of indicators, our Graduation and Completion Index, or GCI, maintains the same rules that had been in place under the prior system. It is a weighted system that assigns a point value based on student outcomes as they move through their high school academic career, and it does include the opportunity to slide or move from one cohort year to the next with no penalty to the school for English learners and students with disabilities who need additional time to graduate. However, students must be in school at the end of the academic year to be eligible to slide under that rule. So, based on those rules, as well as then looking at the dropout rate, dropout is a new indicator. It's always been looked at through our on-time graduation system as one of the areas that are monitored. However, this is the first time that it's been explicitly monitored and reported in this way. Students who are showing as...thank you. Students who are showing as dropout or unconfirmed are going to be reported as dropout after the end of the academic year. And within Fairfax, we had no schools that were a Level 1 or a Level 3 this year for Graduation and Completion Index, and we did, however, have five schools that were a Level 3 for dropout rates. So, those are schools where we are working to tell the narrative of the work that's happening in schools, as well as to really dig into who those students are and how those supports can be taking place, and schools are receiving professional development and So, overall, within the standards of accreditation rating, we have schools assigned based on the Level 1, 2, and 3 ratings for each indicator and overall status. Schools that are, have all of their indicators as a Level 1 or 2 will be deemed overall to be accredited, and if a school has three, has one area or more at a Level 3, one Level 3, then they will be determined to be accredited with conditions. Under this new system, there is no area, no school within Fairfax that is accreditation denied, and that is a designation that we would not expect based on this classification. So, we have only one school also accredited with conditions. As a quick synopsis of the Every Student Succeeds Act, the indicators that are measured for Every Student Succeeds Act are virtually the same as those that are measured for the standards of accreditation, however, they're being measured and reported just slightly differently. So, the students and the tests that are being counted for these calculations are going to be slightly different, as well as you'll notice that the English learner progress and the growth are being reported separately than the overall pass rates in this case. And finally, for our, how our schools are being identified, there are three designations that are given to schools under ESSA: comprehensive support and improvement, targeted support and improvement, and additional targeted support and improvement. All of these are designations that are assigned based on having low overall performance or consecutive and ongoing issues with gaps and low performance. Fairfax has no schools, for the first time in 15 years, that are designated as any of these areas of need for Title 1, which is something that we will celebrate a couple of times this evening. So, with that, I will pass things back to Mr. Greenfelder to talk more about.
All right. If I can get the principals to come on up here and join us at the table. So, thank you all for having us here this evening. This is always one of my favorite opportunities to present you with the success of Project Momentum and also the challenges. I have had the privilege of meeting with each one of you individually and going over your data for the schools that you represent and for the at-large members of all the schools, and I think that was very beneficial. So, I think hopefully as we go through this, there won't be a whole lot of questions about what we're doing because I think we've reviewed that individually. But one thing I would ask the board members to do, if there's something in particular, some of these slides are going to be used for our Virginia School Board Association presentation, which I think is kind of neat that we were asked to go do that and we're going to present, but I want to make sure that if there's something in there that you feel, "Ah, that's probably not a great slide for that," or you might want to add something else, please don't hesitate to let me know in the next couple of weeks before we go down because I want to make sure we're highlighting things that you all would like to. So, with that, I want to do some quick introductions. Brendan Menuie is up here. He has been with me through the expansion and has really helped, I think, increase the Office of School Support and our effectiveness, really brings an outstanding elementary lens, and also, he's probably the best person to do a walkthrough with I've ever been on. I learn more from him every time I walk with him. Sean DeRose, and we'll hear from all our principals in a little bit, done just a phenomenal job at Glasgow, and when you see the results that he's brought there, it's groundbreaking. Angela Thompson, who has really taken advantage of our new support team, she's going to talk a little bit about that. I think with what the board did in allowing us to expand and helping to support more schools, it's really essential that you all hear from those people that are receiving that support because it's been extremely positive so far. Amy Miller at Saratoga, year four accredited with warning, totally out. It's like, I mean, just literally amazing what has happened in that school and the transformation in the culture. Kids are learning at the highest levels they've learned in many a year. And then, Clint Mitchell with an equally successful story. He probably has the hardest school in Fairfax, in Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School. Very challenged, very impoverished. It's where I actually started my teaching career 27 years ago, so I know it pretty well, and the work he has done there, again, it really is a national model. He is a principal that we should celebrate, and we will in just a little bit. I also want to be very respectful and thankful to Dr. Duran, who has really helped with this expansion, and I'm going to talk about some things a little bit later on in the presentation of how we're collaborating and working better than we ever have, and that really comes directly from Dr. Duran. And I also would be remiss if I didn't thank Stephanie Gerald and Jennifer Lent back there because, to be honest, they do all the work. So, they're phenomenal, and we're just, I'm so fortunate to have them as the coordinators because they're the ones out coaching principals, helping to manage the team. They really are indispensable for me. So, with that, we'll get on with it. Basically, our new focus and what we're shifting towards really is closing achievement gaps and ensuring equity. And as you saw from a little bit of Betris' presentation, this new lens on achievement gaps is going to be a challenge for us, but it's the right work. So, I think for the first time, average schools can't hide their achievement gaps, you know, and that's a good thing because we need to make sure that if we truly believe in equity and closing achievement gaps, that we look at those with a very clear lens and then have a very clear purpose for raising achievement for all students. This is more for reference, just so you know what the subgroup categories are, just a reminder that they need to hit 75% in English, 70 in math, and I believe with the direction we're on that we are going to eliminate achievement. Closing achievement gaps is one thing, eliminating them is another, and that's really what our goal should be, is to eliminate achievement gaps. Our mission, you know, this has been what kind of drives us in the Office of School Support. It's really to build capacity of school staff and leadership. We really want to support all schools in Fairfax, and I think we're getting to that point. It's still a struggle. Even with the expansion, there's lots of schools calling and working with the executive principals for school improvement, and we're trying to get out to as many as we can, but it's a good thing to be wanted. We just need to make sure we figure out how to be as efficient as possible to support people. And then, we want to make sure that we're facilitating collaboration, not only within the system, but at the school level, so that we have a high degree of fidelity with anything that we implement. And with that, that leads us to our five key drivers. It's so hard for me not to talk standing up. This is really difficult. I usually got to get up and walk around. I'm used to, you know, doing that. This is hard. So, our five key drivers, what we, and I think this is important for the board to see because this is really what our core focus is in our schools, and it's one, it is one part of the closing the achievement gap framework. It's really under the academic component, but this is how we've been successful over the last four years to do the work that we've done. We really went back and thought and researched and talked to principals. We talked to folks in central office, you know, what are those things that are really making schools move forward? And basically, collaborative teams, you guys have heard the PLC language before, that's really all that is, is high-performing teams at each grade level, in each content area, at every school, and that should be a non-negotiable. Multi-tiered systems of support. What do we do when kids don't learn? How are we responding to help those kids that don't learn? In the past, you probably heard it referred to as RTI, Response to Intervention, was the name, but because the state and the federal level have switched to using the MTSS language, we made sure we did the same, so we're in alignment. High-quality Tier 1 instruction. We need to make sure that regardless of whether you're special ed, ESOL, every child is getting the highest-quality instruction at the classroom level. That's where it needs to start. So, one of our jobs in the Office of School Support is to really help principals coach their teams and their principals up to the highest level so we can ensure that that Tier 1 instruction is really solid. Collaboratively creating lesson plans, and that happens through the collaborative team, and then making sure that it's aligned to the planning and pacing guides and the state standards. You can have the best lesson on the planet, and if it's not aligned to what kids are going to be held accountable for at the end of the year, that's a problem. And we have certain misalignments in the past. I think IS has done a phenomenal job in creating new planning and pacing guides that are very aligned to the new state standards. Principals have, you know, they've been very well-received. We still have some work to do in the middle and high school levels in that area, and I know Instructional Services is working on that, but I feel that's a real key piece. And then, frequent team-created assessments for learning that are aligned to state standards. You used to hear, in the past presentations, I always use the word "common assessments," and we talked about those common assessments. Many of you have heard me talk about that before. We switched the language a little bit to assessments for learning because we want to include problem-based learning, project-based learning, multiple ways to assess kids in a more creative manner. It just needs to be done collaboratively so the team is coming up with those, so that they can serve kids, again, with fidelity and in the best interests of what the team believes they need to do. Why did we come up with those? This is, I showed this last year. This is based on Hattie's research, and if you look at our five key drivers, they all come out of some form of one of these, one of these effect sizes, and it really shows typically, if you're at 1.0 where you see response to intervention, that's roughly equivalent to two to four grade levels of an increase. So, if you can see, if I'm just building relationships in students with poverty, it's basically, they're negating each other, so I'm not going to get the gain that I need. We have to make sure we're using these other things so that we can push kids that are the most challenged with high-yield strategies that we know are research-based and have proven over time to be highly effective.
The way we've identified our schools is by formulas that we use and the data that we're able to look at. So, we don't just let each regional assistant superintendent pick two or three. We really try to use an unbiased method for that. So, we take into account the school's accreditation status, whether they're fully accredited or accredited with warning. The new measurement is this comprehensive or targeted, it used to be called priority or focus schools. We're kind of in transition because the state has changed the accountability system this year, but if a school was warned by the state for being one of the lowest schools in the state, we would automatically serve them. We look at the gap points. Virginia used to count how far from the benchmark each subgroup was in their performance and then calculate all those points together, so we've used those historically. If they've missed their annual measurable objectives towards the federal accountability system, and then if they've gone backwards, maybe they've done well, they've hit all their marks, but they've gone backwards. Automatic qualifiers to get to the intensive status, we've historically looked at whether they were the lowest 5% or 10% of the Title 1 schools in the state. That's the focus or priority status. We've also looked at if they're greater than two years of not meeting the standards, that they've not been fully accredited, or they've not met their numbers. Virginia, there was a year when they looked back and they said, "You met your numbers for several years, the past several years. Even though this year you didn't meet, we're going to grandfather you in." So, that's why those last two bullets, they sound like they're the same thing, but they're a little bit different.
So, with that, I think this is the slide. This is the OUA slide, right? I mean, we started in 14, 15 with 18 schools. We're down to one. I think that's pretty amazing for the group and really shows the collaborative efforts that we've had. I think it shows the emphasis that the board has put on this as well, and it's gone through three superintendents who've supported it, and I think having that consistent message is why we're getting these results. And even the one school, you know, it's basically one grade level in all of Fairfax County, which is, again, a pretty amazing feat. I think in some respects, this is actually more of a celebration, and anybody who's been under NCLB or ESSA sanctions, the volume of paperwork is like double what the state is. I mean, it's pretty overwhelming, and I think you spend more time doing the paperwork and compliance than being able to improve your school. And this, to me, in 15 years, we've had, we've always had a couple of schools, and now we have none, and again, I think that really shows that we're on to the right stuff. And I make, you know, no promise, we don't have it totally figured out. We know that. We have a lot of work to do, and we will continue that journey, but I do think this helps reaffirm that we're on the right stuff and we're heading in the right direction and using the right strategies. We just have to continue to refine if we're going to get better.
So, some of the things the intensive schools receive, the support they receive, this is, we've showed this to you before, they get this prioritized instructional support. So, when school, when an intensive school calls and they need some support, we need to run over there really fast. We say, if we use the metaphor of being ill, these are the schools that have a lot going on there, like they're in the ICU. They need a lot of support. They also get additional money for hourly teacher to bring over the summer to work with their team leaders or CLT leaders or write their school improvement plan because their school improvement plans are due earlier than everybody else's. We need them to start the first day with their plan in place. They receive two instructional coaches, typically one for language arts and one for math. They also are able to use their Title 1 staffing to get more planning time for teachers, to dip into that to get additional art, music, or PE, or FLS, or counseling, whatever it might be. They're able to get customized support from OSS specialists, so our resource teams, which we're going to talk about in a few minutes, how they've worked with their schools. There's these monthly meetings where we come out, the Office of School Support comes out with regional leadership and has a problem-solving session right there with the school to monitor their progress towards their goals and their school improvement plan, but also to help remove any barriers or obstacles that are in the way of achieving those goals. There's specialized professional development, so we'll create some professional development, maybe just for fifth-grade science or for this particular unit, and it's solely for the folks who are priority schools, schools that need the additional support. They get the additional needs-based staffing from the formula from the board. They have additional contracts for teacher leaders to bring them on board for set days ahead of time, and then they get support from HR in the sense that they, we don't place de-staffs at these schools, involuntary placements. We need these schools to choose who's going to be on board and who's going to work there. So, they can interview folks that are de-staffed, that are surplus, but they, they're not given them. They also get additional support with their hourly, the folks that are assigned, like their adapted PE or their psychologist or social worker, people that are not based at the school. But if those people are requiring a little bit too much support from the principal, we need to free the principal up to monitor student achievement, and so we'll move those people to other sites if needed, based on support from folks here in the leadership team. The targeted gets similar, a little bit less because they're not in quite as much need, so they'll get one instructional coach, they'll still get the funding, they don't get the extended contracts, they're still going to access their Title 1 staffing for the planning. the extended contracts, they're still going to access their Title I staffing for the planning, they're still invited to support from professional development from OSS. Their meetings are quarterly instead of monthly, where we check on their progress and monitor their, their, towards their goals. And they're still accessing the needs-based staffing from the board.
So one thing I think might be helpful is, and then I'm going to come back to the principals, is to have Brendan talk a little bit about the visits and the data, what that shows. And then we'll go back to the principals, because I think that will help when they, they frame their conversations.
So we require our folks in Office of School Support to track their visits to schools and to see what they're doing at schools and where they're spending their time. And they, they report this on a Google sheet. Every month, we, we analyze the results, Mark and myself and the other executive principals for school improvement. And so these are our five intensive schools. And this, these are the numbers of visits, just in September, which, you know, there's a few days off in September. These are the hours by those schools, because sometimes you say they're the whole day, it counts as one visit, but it was really five hours, seven hours. So you can see that the kinds of support these, these folks are getting is pretty intense.
Wanted you to see that first, as we have our principal share a little bit about each one of their journeys. So I think we'll probably start with Sean and give them a couple of minutes, and then we'll kind of work our way around the table. And then we have some data that we'll show you about where we were last year and where we ended up this year. Again, very, very positive. And we'll finish up with a brief comment about the new teams and our new executive principals for school improvement.
Good evening, everybody. I was hoping to go last, not first, but if I'm thrust on the spot, I will. I, Mark kind of mentioned that Glasgow has gone, done some tremendous things, and I think we first would like just to recognize our staff, you know, who's done some amazing things in the classroom. I will tell you, it's, this is about a partnership. When you, when I think about Glasgow's journey, it wouldn't have been, I don't think we've been nearly as successful without the support that we've gotten from the Office of School Support and the region. It's not necessarily what is really unique about this, in my experience, and I think for many of you who know me, I've been in this county for quite a number of years. It's not a come in and this is how you need to change. We all have different needs, different perspectives, different histories in our building. So coming in and really, I think what I enjoy most about working with the Office of School Support and my region is the conversations, the thought-provoking questions that they ask, and really drilling in deep to where support is needed. And how is it best that we provide that support? Either that personally, professionally, for me, as the principal, our administrative staff, but specifically our coaches and our teachers. So that partnership and these questions, these thought-provoking questions, I think that they ask, and there's an accountability piece to it. Mark's mentioned, as at a Project Momentum intensive school, we have quarterly meetings. And I don't know if I'd describe them as fun, but I really would describe them as thought-provoking and challenging. And what I, what I like most about that, when I self-reflect a little bit, and I even think a little bit about my staff at Glasgow, what truly makes them remarkable is that they work very hard, but they are also open and reflective and open for feedback. And hopefully I model that in that same way, and having questions with Office of School Support or our region office, is that they will ask, there's some thought-provoking questions. Some of it can be described as radical candor, too. But I, I will tell you, that's, that's what I like most. That's really why I, I love coming to work every day at Glasgow. And one of the reasons why is, is not only that I have leaders around me that challenge me and my way of thinking, but we can also then have those conversations as a staff. So that partnership is kind of something that I've wanted to highlight.
Good evening. I'm the proud principal at Newington Forest Elementary School. And our school is a small school, 520 students, but we have high needs. We are 30% free and reduced. And I absolutely love having a region support team. It has been a wonderful equalizer for us, because we are not Title I, but we do have more than 30%, where we're not an intensive or a targeted school. So we still have pockets of need at our school without really having a target, a targeted plan for us. So the region support teams have been hugely successful for us. It is absolutely easy to access them, which has been wonderful. My, this is my third year at Newington Forest. My first year, my AP and I had to do all of our own staff development. We had no coach, we could not afford a coach. We, we really had to pull together and provide all the staff development that we could for our staff. But now I have a team of expert people that I can call upon to really do some targeted work within the school. So for example, some of the things that we've worked on is in our special education population, which is growing. We have a wonderful special education resource teacher who comes in and helps me do scheduling audits to make sure we're not under or over-servicing students, which would take hours of my time in the past. I now can delegate that to someone, and that has been a wonderful support. Last week and the week before, we had math walkthroughs at our school, that all I had to do was ask for a team to come out, and they organize, our math coordinator organized that for us. And we'll organize the feedback and the data to the school to figure out how we can target math instruction and support students. So it's been really wonderful just to be able to, to have that extension of help, because we don't fit into the other categories that these principals represent at their schools. But we still have that pocket of need, and I now feel that that need is being met pretty effectively.
Hi, I'm the principal at Saratoga Elementary School. And I have to say, I am a huge cheerleader of Project Momentum. We've had a great partnership my entire time at Saratoga. And what I really appreciate about our partnership is, yes, it's about student achievement, but it's also about shifting the culture of a school. So as we exit out of our intensive school status, I know that our culture at Saratoga has changed, and as a result of that, the work that we're doing and the achievement we're seeing is still going to sustain itself. When I think about our partnership with Project Momentum, I really think about three areas of having the biggest impact. One is the differentiated support. So as an intensive school, we had those monthly meetings, and we looked at student achievement data, but we also looked at observational data. So we were constantly triangulating our data. It wasn't just one data point that determined what we were doing. We were looking at observations, student achievement, different surveys that were out. And we were having real-time conversations about what the data was showing and what we needed to do next. I am one of those principals, I love our monthly meetings, because you just, it's right there. There are no surprises, and we can take action immediately. And there's nothing more powerful than that. It's no surprises, we can take action. The other piece that I really appreciate, and I think really benefited Saratoga, is it's a very comprehensive approach, right? So we're not just looking in one area of instruction. We're not just supporting classroom teachers. We have resource teachers from the Office of School Support that's supporting special ed, ESOL, our clinical staff, our general education teachers, all areas of the school. In addition to the support that it provides for principals with staffing, I had conversations around parent liaison support. So it's really that comprehensive approach that allows us to make the change in as short of a period of time as possible. And then finally, as a principal, trying to increase student achievement at a very rapid rate and really turn a school around, we're really, there's lots of different factors coming at principals, as you all know. And there was often times that I would sit down with one of the educational specialists or a member of our Project Momentum team and just have that reflecting conversation. And that allowed me as a principal to step back, get that balcony view, and then go and take action. And that, to me, was invaluable.
Good evening. I'm Clint Mitchell, principal of Mount Vernon Woods Elementary. A lot has been said, but I'm going to go back a little bit to talk a little bit about when I was hired for the position of principal at Mount Vernon Woods. One of the things I remembered is, we talked about changing culture during my meeting with the superintendent staff. And in order to do that, I think something happened, and I want to thank the board, and I want to thank the superintendent staff, I want to thank Mr. Greenfelder, and of course, Project Momentum, because something unprecedented happened. And that is, we were able to have an opportunity to really shift some staff around for the administrative transfer process. And I think that was valuable for us as a school. Not because we didn't have teachers who were good at what they did, but they might have been the best fit for our school. So my model for me was, we have to go fast to go slow. And when I came in at the school, I decided to put some things in place very quickly, based on what I observed, because it just needed to be done. And some of that included ruffling the feathers by really making a bold statement, and that is that if you are working at Mount Vernon Woods as a specialist, whether it's a coach, whether it's a reading specialist, you are going to work with kids. Because the data told us that we had approximately anywhere from 35 to 65% of kids reading below grade level, and we couldn't have that. And so we embark on a new journey, and we focus on three main things. You heard, you saw some of it up there. One was to use the CLT process as a vehicle to change our practice. The second one, Mr. Data and I went back and forth on that quite a bit. And I took on the challenge to really try to implement a comprehensive MTSS model at our school. And I remembered, you know, our conversation vividly, because he said, you know, that's a big task, but we did it, and we did it real well. And the last piece for me was really to attack the issue around reading instruction. Too many kids were reading below grade level. So we focused on really that balanced literacy model, but focusing on guided reading instruction and doing it well, because teachers were all over the place. And so that was used for us. So as we get into Project Momentum, what they did was to help me systematize the process of providing differentiated professional development for teachers. Because teachers were at different places. Some of them were great experts around MTSS, some of them were great experts around math instruction, reading, but really they needed more. And so Project Momentum and Office of School Support allow us to do that differentiation process for our teachers. And I think, you know, as Amy said, you know, I, I relish, you know, the idea of people coming to our schools, because it is what it is. And we basically open our doors for folks to come in, and we do what we do. So when they come in, what I tell my teachers is, we do the work that we've always done. But I like the meetings, because at the end of the day, when we walk out, it's something new I started, and I think it's kind of taken flight in all of the Project Momentum schools, is I always come back at the next meeting answering the questions that they ask of us. And, and, and part of it for me was to make sure that by the time we come back a month later, if there was a concern, I had already addressed it. And, and so that really became huge for our school. And there are a lot of other factors that got us to where we needed to be, but I just wanted to highlight those few pieces.
Thank you. With that, we'll move forward a little bit, and then we'll come back and, and allow plenty of time for the board to have questions. So a couple of important highlights. Again, I do believe that this starts with the school board and with the support. This was a big shift from the old priority school initiative days, and the fact that we got, you know, overwhelming support from this board, and it has, through needs-based staffing, through the expansion of our office, you know, the board should share in any success that we've achieved, certainly, because I believe this is our initiative together, and it's been, again, a very collaborative process. You know, I think it's pretty telling, because superintendents like to come in and do different stuff, or start new pet initiatives, and this has lasted through three and had overwhelming support from all three of them. I think the cross-departmental meetings and support are better than they've ever been, having been in this county now going on 27 years. The fact that we are meeting together between the Office of Instructional Services, DSS, my office, regions, that collaboration is better than it's ever been. And that's, I think, really probably making the most difference, to be honest with you. And then, as you see, principal and teacher confidence is, they have a lot of confidence in the supports they're getting, and I think that's the most essential thing. If teachers and principals don't believe in what we're selling, that's not going to work. And, you know, I can tell you, every person who's been hired in the Office of School Support has had to go through the panel of principals that they're going to work with. So those are the people that are helping and making the decisions to hire the folks that come into my office, which I think builds instant credibility for them when they go back out into the schools. Our CEO meetings, and again, this is just another highlight from the cross-departmental work, and it's, it's hard for me to overstate that, because we, we can get so siloed, as, as you all know, especially many of you have been around for a long time. It's so easy to get siloed in Fairfax, because it's so big. And you have people that speak with different voices or different passions, and that can be confusing to principals and to teachers. Everybody's well-intentioned, nobody's trying to do it, because they're trying to supplant somebody, but it's just people have different philosophies and passions. And under Francisco's leadership, he has brought us together like never before, with a strong emphasis on you are going to work together, it's not an option, you're going to figure it out, you're going to collaborate, and we can do this. And like I said, in 27 years, I've not seen anything like it. I think it's been groundbreaking. I know that Sloan and Teresa Johnson would, would both concur, and certainly Francis, our new deputy, would concur. We're really collaborating, as you could see, with our OST office and IT. I think it's pretty interesting, you know, we work hand-in-hand. I meet every month with Mary Beth, and we really try to problem-solve. They, she has been, and her team, been very reactive and also proactive to trying to come up with tools and systems that are benefiting schools and, and adapting as quickly as we can. And so I think that's been a big, a big help for schools, at least that's what they've reported. Again, we're working very closely with Instructional Services. I like to sometimes say we're like an extension of that, right? Because we don't want to be in conflict with what Instructional Services is developing and implementing in schools. It's great stuff. But sometimes schools need a little bit more and a little deeper help. And as you heard, those teams might need a little bit more. So we can come in with our expertise and just help make that better and, and put it more at the ground, at the ground floor. And then I think one of the greatest partnerships that we have is our, our partnership with DSS and Teresa Johnson. If we're going to eliminate achievement gaps, it's going to be through MTSS. There's no other way to do it. It is, how do we respond when kids don't learn and don't understand? And Teresa's leadership has really helped us galvanize and come up with, with a process. We, we went out and we learned together. We have a whole year-long learning seminar going on between our offices, and she is very involved in the Office of School Support on a regular basis, even at her level, to make sure that schools are getting the right support, especially around special ed, but also around how are we going to build this multi-tiered systems of support for all kids, so that we can help whether they're in special ed, ESOL, a, a regular kid that's struggling. We need to be able to respond and help those kids. A quick highlight of the data, this is always my, my favorite. You can see, based on the results, this is just from 21718 to 21819, and it's only for the schools that were intensive last year. So those were all the schools that were intensive. And again, pretty good, not perfect. You know, we have, and we don't hide from the data. You know, we have some schools that dipped a little bit, but, you know, the, the ones that dipped are still above the red, which is good. We want to be able to get them to achieve at a high level, and, you know, sometimes progress isn't always linear, that's for sure. But I do think this shows pretty good pass rates for English. Math, similar story. If you look at Mount Vernon Woods, I think that's a pretty exceptional with what they did around math instruction. It's, the state did not believe he, that Mount Vernon Woods was going to make it. And when, after the SOLs, when they called me directly and I had a conversation with Dr. Rabel, she couldn't believe it. And I, and, and she was just so impressed with the work there. And then our science pass rates, again, some pretty incredible gains from multiple schools. And then there's some challenges up there, too, that we got to continue, continue to work on. This is for the targeted schools. And again, pretty positive. We have a couple of schools that pop out, and you wonder, you know, were they getting enough support? This helps us figure out, how do we tailor support? And it also helps regions figure out, you know what, we, there are certain schools we can't leave alone, because they need a little bit more help than others. because they need a little bit more help than others. And that's why, it's easy to just leave out a few schools and only put the ones that show an increase. But we want to make sure that we're very transparent with what the data shows and then how do we figure out how to help those schools? Math pass rate. Again, very positive. And all this is in, is in the PowerPoint. And we have some supplemental information at the back that I won't, I won't go over. And then science for targeted. And we had a really big emphasis on science last year. So I think that shows that we got a lot of gains in that area. We really tried to focus on that as much as we could. So when we, you know, when we really put our efforts into it, there's not really a lot of problems we can't solve. But when you have a whole lot of them, it's how do you use your resources to make sure you can get to everything? And that's the challenge. So with that, I wanted to introduce our executive principals for school improvement. If you guys, I know they're in the back, but if they would at least stand up to be recognized. Nardus King with Region One, Brendan Menuy, Region Two, Evangelion Petrich, Region Three, Terry Edmonds-Hurge, Region Four, and Eric McCann, Region Five. They are, and they are here because of the board members in this room. There is no question, and I know it was not an easy thing to do, to expand the ranks. They are, it's working better than I could have dreamed. It really is. I mean, they are really getting out in schools. They are utilizing these new resources. They are getting the help where it needs the most. And I think overall, it's, it's one of the smartest decisions we've made. I was one, so I'm a little biased. But I, I just think it, it, it's making more of a difference than, than I think most people realize. But I see it on a daily basis and, again, very appreciative. The regional support teams, this is kind of the last thing I want to talk about before I get into the high school piece. Really, the goal was to, how, how do we expand the success of Project Momentum and try to get out to more schools? That was the original ask. And so, you know, by creating five regional teams in the, the above areas, you know, English, math, science, ESOL, MTSS, and special ed, we're able to get out and we're able to help lots of schools in a region. However, when you got forty in a region and you got five, you got one math expert, it's still hard. You know, I don't, I don't want people to think, oh, they, you know, the county now has all these resources. This is really easy to fix. Because what's happening is we're getting schools that never needed help before, that are asking and reaching out and, and taking advantage of those resources. And that's a great thing, but it also shows the need out there. There is a lot of need for schools that want the help, especially with these new achievement gaps that are going to be highlighted because people don't want to, don't want to get into certainly trouble with the state. And they most importantly, want to do right by kids. So the last thing I want to talk about before we open it up to questions and have you guys talk to, to our principals some more, is the secondary support model. And again, as Francisco mentioned, this really isn't an ask, it's more informational purposes and just to get people thinking. Our team is really strong, really strong at helping elementary schools. And I think you can see that by the results. We're pretty good at middle schools. We've got some great results, but, you know, fortunately, we have, you know, people we've been working with are great leaders. High school, we just don't have a lot of high school personnel in our office that have that expertise. So using that model, using our similar model, it's how can we take the lessons learned from Project Momentum and the lessons learned from the expansion this year and service high schools? As you see, we have five school, five high schools that are going to be on the borderline next year for dropout, right? Do we have, you know, somebody in Office of School Support that has expertise in that area that can go help and work with those schools? No, we don't. As you saw, one of the schools, it's math at the, at the secondary level. We don't have that expertise to go out and help. So I think the, the proposal would be very reasonable and something that we would try to have potentially one team of, of a couple extra folks that would be able to go out and support all high schools. You know, we need to start at that level rather than something huge. I think that would be something very reasonable. So those are the areas that, that we're getting requests in that are really hard to field. ESOL, math, all the, all the other things. The biggie is, you know, dropout, GCI, and attendance. Again, we have great supports in IS and DSS in different places. But it's having that ground-level expert that can go in and work with these folks. So that's, that's kind of on the horizon that we thought it would be very important for you guys to see.
Thank you very much. We so appreciate the very thorough report. And I know there are a lot of questions, just to reiterate for, for those who came in a little bit after the beginning. We are going to ask everybody to make their comments and ask all of their questions at once in three minutes. And then staff will answer that, those questions. And we, we're also going, if we have time, we have a little bit less than an hour for questions. Hopefully, there will be time for go-backs as well. But with that, I have a, a long list of people who would like to ask questions, starting with Ms. Darrenet Kofax, Ms. Hines, and then Ms. Corbett Sanders. And Mr. Wilson is planning to keep time. So please look at him and he'll let you know when you're getting close to your time. So yes, we've got, yep, the yellow card says you've got one minute left.
Oh, boy.
And this, yes, and this says, please wrap up, right?
Start now.
Yes, R for wrap up.
Mr. Greenfelter. I thank you and your team for this presentation and the good news. And I also thank you for meeting with each of us because it's a very complex area for the public that may be watching this or listening later on. What was done with each, with each Magisterial Board member was we were each allowed to go through this report thoroughly, talk about the old standards, the new standards, and where we're going and where we may have concerns. So one question I had was for the principals, which you already did it in your presentation, that was kind of like telling us what were some of the best things that you learned individually. And if, if I can though, just one other thing, if you want to think about it, are there any improvements you think that can, can continue? The thing, Mark, that I would like you to ask, to talk about is, and we talked about this briefly during our one-to-one meeting. But when I look at Amy and, you know, the progress you've made, but how are we going to support her now that she's out of this? And what, what kind of, you know, supports and care are we going to give? We don't want the, it, it to be cut off. And how, how is that going to happen? Dr. Duran, maybe you can talk about this and Mark together. How do you see this? Can we be making any improvements when we look at it from an equity lens? And your area? And, and how, how can we continue to do that? And I, my last question was kind of answered, but do you have a plan? I know you said we're looking at it, we don't have anything right now because I know some of my schools are ones that may be, may be looked at next year about the dropout rate. And what, what plans? And what, if we're talking budget right now for next year, what funds might be necessary to get this kind of programming up and started for what the intensive supports we need for high school, for high school students or, and, and/or middle school?
Thank you, Ms. Darrenet Kofax. I think you were well within your three minutes. So did you get all those questions?
I think so. I'm going to do my best here. So let me, I'll start with the last one. So I do think that, you know, the way Project Momentum works is that school, as Brendan shared with you, schools that are intensive get a certain amount of support. Schools that are targeted get a certain amount of support. And then you're kind of graduated into universal status. I think the advantage is that as schools graduate, we rec, we recapture the funds that were used to support that. So one of the things we're looking at is repurposing that. So that's why I didn't really come with an ask because I believe that if we continue on the trend we are and, and have the success that I'm pretty sure we're going to have, we're going to be able to repurpose those funds into high school support positions, much of like what I just described. So I do think we'll be able to do that. You know, there'll be instructional coaches in those areas, or I should say, resource teachers in those areas to support the high school. So I, I think we're going to be okay there, but, but we definitely have a plan for that. In terms of the support for schools, all of these schools, one of the things we do is if you become an intensive school, we keep you there for two years, no matter what. So like Amy is intensive again, she's getting all the same support, even though she's fully accredited. It was a phenomenal job. She's still getting the exact same support that she got last year. Same thing with Clint and the same thing with Sean. Next year, because I know they're going to continue on the trajectory they're on, they will move to targeted status and they have to stay there for two years. So they'll get decent support for two additional years. And hopefully by then, you know, they've built up the culture and the resources and the things they need to sustain them after that, where the regional teams would then offer additional supports as necessary. And that is the fine magic is where are we? But one of the, and it's, it's one of the slides at the, at the very end of, of the, of the packet and the supplemental information. I have a, a graph of every, and every school that was ever an intensive school. And what you'll find there is that we have been able to exit a lot of those schools. Many of them are universal schools now and they're doing really well. So we've been able to build them up and have them sustain. There are certainly a few that are, are backsliding and we're working with the regions and, and, and to help fix that. But it's, what's that magic mix? I think we're getting really close. I don't think we're there yet. So with that, let me, you guys want to, did you want to answer any questions about?
Well, I can speak to kind of the release of support. So one thing you notice on the graphs of ours, Saratoga is currently lower than some of the other schools, even though we're still intensive. And that really is by design and in collaboration with Project Momentum. So right now, we're working on, my plan is to have, when we go into targeted, to have our monthly school leadership committee meetings model what our monthly Project Momentum meetings have been. So we're really working on building up the capacity of our staff to do that work, which so this year, we're, even though we're intensive, we're reducing the amount of support. But with that safety net, knowing that anytime we can, you know, call in everybody and do what's needed. So to me, this gradual release of support really speaks to that capacity building that Project Momentum allows to happen in the school. So I'm confident that once we're targeted, although I don't want to be, I really, really appreciate the partnership. I mean, I want to be, but you know, I don't want to lose that partnership. I'm confident that the staff has, has so much capacity built that they'll be able to keep the work going.
And Dr. Duran, I, I believe you were asked a question about equity and then we'll go on to Ms. Hines.
So the notion of equity, well, one thing that if you saw on the slides, we did include one of our equity culture responsive specialists for each of the teams and that's new. So we're beginning to help build capacity with the teams around looking at things from an equitable perspective. But the other thing I think that's important, if you tied back to what Betris' presentation shared on those achievement gap indicators. We're looking at schools that are intensive and targeted through the Project Momentum lens. We also now have to look at those indicators for certain schools that aren't technically labeled intensive or targeted, but have some achievement gap or GCI or dropout concerns and target our resources directly for those schools. So that's kind of the equity approach is how do we make sure that all schools that are showing need are getting that support, not just the, the way that we've used in the traditional model, but now expanding that to think through these various indicators? And we have a lot of school, not a lot, we have some schools that have an achievement gap that has now been brought to our attention that wasn't there previously. It wasn't a school that we had even considered supporting or even looked at. And now we have the need to address there. So that's kind of just at a high level, a little at times, some of the ways that we think about equity differently. We also, as Mark mentioned, are meeting monthly, collaborating amongst teams. And we have a team that's focused on equity, bringing together all those various offices to unpack that.
All right, thank you. And just. Ms. Hines to be followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Ms. Evans, can I just say one thing since I did have one minute left? I just want to say, I just want to thank the principals because some of the things you said about courageous conversation, self-reflection, those are hard things to do as a leader, particularly when your school is under this lens from a state and from a school system. So thank you for all being honest today and, and being that courageous person that's out there doing all that. So, and thank you for being here and sharing your night with us. Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you and congratulations. Because of the work that you're doing, Fairfax County is leading on probably the most important and toughest question in public schools today. And that's where we should always be in a leadership position. And more importantly, we're meeting the needs of kids every day. So thank you very much for everything. I have three questions. One, I wonder if, Mark, if you can tell me, to summarize for everybody, something you told me in our private meeting, which was that there's a new state accreditation wrinkle that you're a little bit concerned about us being able to meet. And I just wonder if you could just explain that for everybody that briefly, the way you explained it to me, that was helpful. Secondly, how are we checking in with teachers at Project Momentum schools? I mean, how are we making sure that they feel empowered and that they're going to stay? I understand when you change culture, you need to change people. But if we're changing people every two years, then we're not really, right, we're not, this has to come from teachers, right? So I just want to know how we're checking in. Are the employee associations being asked, how is it going? That sort of thing. And also, I'm, as part of that question, I, it sounds like there's extra planning time for teachers and teams at these schools. So maybe you could tell me a little bit about that. And then finally, where in all of this work are we holding ourselves accountable for portrait of a graduate skills? Are we making sure that kids in Project Momentum schools are not missing the opportunity to go further and, you know, do the, be, be challenged and measured on collaboration and creativity and problem-solving and all those important skills? Because I know as a classroom teacher, you got a triage, right? And sometimes things get lost. So thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to start, Mr. Greenfelter.
Yeah, I'll start and then I'll turn it over to the principals. I think on, on the last question, just to give a little highlight, that's why on the fifth key driver, when we talk about teachers creating assessments, we really want them creating assessments for learning, you know, which really gets into those problem-based practices, collaborative work. What are ways other than just a paper pencil, fill-in-the-blank or, you know, bubble the right answer assessment? So that is part of what we do, but all the principals can speak to that. Or, or Dr. Menuy much better than I can. The new wrinkle that we talked about, and fortunately, the state reversed course in, in, in great part because of Dr. Duran. So the four-year, there, there was a four-year rule, and Betris can, can correct me on this, that was going to go look retroactively the, the last, the back three years. And so they would start the clock in two thousand fifteen, sixteen and move it forward, which I don't even know how somebody would have actually come up with that idea. But they did. And it was, it had a lot of people panicked, including us, because we would have had a lot of schools that had these achievement gaps for the last four years that we didn't even know about, based on the metrics and would have been penalized. I was fortunate enough to be able to go down and speak to the State Board of Education over the summer and reiterated that message. And again, I think through Dr. Duran's leadership, they changed that. So the window starts now and goes forward. So we have, in, in those categories that are affected by the four-year rule, we have some time to make sure that we're putting in the right things to move forward. Did I say that right, Betris? She's the brains by far, so I just try to listen to what she says.
And about teacher and planning time?
In terms of the extra planning time, one of the things that we do is we provide quarterly release time for teams to plan as a group under the direction of the instructional coaches. And the idea there is to really plan backwards, looking further ahead and looking at some long-term range planning. So we do that on a quarterly basis. Whenever we have our half-day or release time, we also provide staff the opportunity, opportunity to do that. What we do with the extra funding, we get an extra twenty thousand dollars in terms of providing for Project Momentum time for teachers to plan during the course of the summer, for us to get the SIP plan in.
for us to get the SIP plan in. And so we make, we want to make sure that we have a, it's very targeted. We have objectives for the day. And most importantly, it's not teachers planning by themselves, but the Office of School Support, they play a key role in that process as well as our instructional coaches. Uh, and that has been absolutely tremendous for us. The other piece you mentioned, I know for us as a school, we focused over the last two years really on getting to that accreditation status. Now, what we've done this year is we started to implement more so the POG skills into the work that we are doing. And we've weaved that into our school improvement and, and the innovation plan by focusing on the communicative goal this year, specifically around academic conversations in language arts, math throughout the course of the day.
Thank you. Now, oh, did you want to add to that?
I wanted to add around the Portrait of a Graduate skills. And although we're not a Project Momentum school, last year we were targeted in science. And so some of the support that we got from the Office of School Support were planning days for the fourth grade and fifth grade teams because the science test in fifth grade is mainly fourth grade science objectives. So both the fourth grade and the fifth grade teachers received that planning through the Office of School Support. So this year with the remodeling of the models that region support teams, I still have my science resource teacher coming into the school to support fourth and fifth grade planning, which has been really wonderful to have another resource, different method, different model, but still the same effectiveness. Around Portrait of a Graduate, specific to science for our school, is that we created and enhanced our STEAM program so that we could get that hands-on learning that was creative and it wasn't necessarily bound to a curriculum standard, but more of the exploration and a support of what we were doing in science and math to help balance our heavy needs for the actual instructional piece, but also the creativity piece. Schools are funding that on their own, but it's still an, an extension to children.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I don't know if I had a question, an answer to the question of how we are measuring teacher happiness with what's going on in Project Momentum.
Yeah, I would, I was excited about answering this. I think first of all, in all of our schools, it might be a little bit unique, but there's structures in place for always hearing from the teacher's perspective. I will tell you from a data standpoint, every school, Glasgow included, gets the engagement survey, right? So that's one point. At Glasgow, we have different systems and support structures. So we have a instructional council where we get feedback directly from the teachers. We have a CT lead cohort. We have a new teacher mentorship program that meets. We have faculty and staff advisory committee. One of the things that we're very purposeful is looking at that data and then using that data to really drive the decisions and our professional development in the school. So yes, it is, it is the direction from a principal standpoint of setting clear priorities. And this, what's exciting about being, uh, working with the Office of School Support in my region is, is setting those clear priorities. But that can't happen and done well without the teacher voice. And I can specifically say that we value it. There isn't very rarely that we don't come together as a staff, that we're not projecting some feedback that our staff has given that is helping steer our work. So you have to be very mindful because I think we would all agree that the work, you know, Glasgow specifically is the largest middle school in the state. It is 65% free and reduced lunch. We have every type of learner in our school from every country. And in order to retain that quality staff, they must feel as if not only they're valued, but they are also part of driving where we're going in the school. And we're absolutely very mindful of that.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders to be followed by Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here tonight. I am a big cheerleader for Project Momentum. I keep having the Ghostbusters song, Who You Going to Call, going through my mind because I think all of us know that when our schools are having a challenge, it's who you're going to call? You're going to call Project Momentum and they're going to come and help. But I do have some concerns going forward because the success of Project Momentum has been so great. We expanded it with very limited resources of expanding it to the whole county, including adding an extra executive principal in those regions that did not have the same level of challenges as others. And so I would like to have a better understanding from, I don't know who the right person, it might actually be something to put in a parking lot for a future discussion, but whether or not our structure of our regions are balanced because of, we have a disproportionate need in some regions versus others. And from an equity standpoint, is it appropriate to concentrate the highest needs in just a couple of regions and then have different needs or less significant demands in other regions with the same resources? The second thing that I do want to talk a little bit about is the identification of when we send the dream team back in because there are a number of places where there have been some backsliding, you know, and do we have a, rather than waiting until they backslid to a point where that they, where they're no longer accredited or accredited with warning, is there, are there metrics that say, oh, if you drop more than two or three points, time for us to come back in and, and do a booster shot of supports? And then the other is what type of supports do you put in place when we've had, at least in my region, a significant number of principal turnover? Where we've had principals pulled from a school and going to opportunities at another school, but they're going from a school and Project Momentum that's been very successful and they may be going somewhere else. But if we, then, you know, how do we make sure that we provide the supports there so that they can transition and the new team in place gets the supports they need? And then the last piece is the legislative ask because when you started tonight, you said there's some things you might want to ask us to advocate for, and I didn't hear what the legislative ask was.
Thank you. Get all those?
I did, but I, I'm not going to answer all of those. I'm going to leave the, the first one you asked for the people that are way above my pay grade to answer because that's a tough one. You know, I'm going to start with the other supports in place for when a, a principal moves because, you know, if I was in a, a region and I had a really tough school that was all of a sudden in trouble, you know, I'd be trying to recruit these. I mean, these are the best that we have. And it is important for us to be able to take principals that are very successful and have turned around a school and have them to help another school. I think it's, it's good career growth for them and it's good for the, the receiving school. We do have to make sure that we are supporting the school that's losing somebody. And I think that's where we have to work a little, do a better job of working a little closer with the region. Because really we take, in a situation like that where they are a universal school, we would take our direction from the region. If the region said, hey, we need to give this school extra support, they have the regional support team that is assigned to really their executive principal for school improvement and the RAS. And they would have the direction to be able to move their people. So they actually tier their schools for support. Each region does that. We have our own tiering for Project Momentum that Brendan talked about and identifying schools for intensive and targeted. But because of the new model, regions also tiered their schools based on who they think needed the most support. So I think when issues like that arise, we need to be proactive and address them. It's certainly something I'll be more cognizant of in the future. But I also think that's a regional assistant superintendent probably question that, that, you know, maybe somebody like Fabio back there has been a, a huge champion and, and I'm a huge fan of his, the way he runs his region. He could maybe allude to how we could prevent that from happening a little bit better. And then identifying when we go back in, you know, that's a little bit to the question I answered before. It is finding that secret, what's the, what's the secret mix? Because it's hard when you have, and some of them, it's just a dip. We've, we've seen it in the graphs. They might go stair step up and then they do have a pretty significant drop off, but then they go right back up again. Washington Mill is a great example. They had outstanding gains. They fell off, a lot of people panicked. I said, they're going to be fine and sure enough, boom, they went right back up. So I think it's, the hard part is you want to catch them before they get two years negative. But we haven't found the perfect metric for if they drop 10%, they're not going to go back up. So we need to, you know, hopefully over time, we can get better at that. But I think one of the things Brendan does really well is he looks for patterns and trends and is there a decline? And then he leads that discussion with the EPs and myself and our team to figure out, okay, here's somebody that we really need to look at. We need to keep an eye on them. And we have some of those this year. So I think, you know, he, hearing that concern, we will be especially attentive to that going into next year. And I do think the new standards of accreditation, the way they are, are really going to help us to do that even better. But those are two great points.
And Dr. Dron, did you want to deal with, give us a bit of a preview of the legislative ask?
Sure. Well, some of the, a big legislative ask was, was what Ms. Hines had asked about the four-year average. So we were able to get a compromise on that because it's not completely gone for overall and for GCI. But I think we're going to be talking next week with Michael Malloy and Betris has helped us to really refine this more. But the main two things I think are probably really thinking about the new dropout indicator and how we can best think through some suggestions for how we better monitor and can show growth in that area? How do we qualify to show that schools have very, very extenuating circumstances as it relates to students that are coming at various points throughout the year that are being then dinged, if you will, for not having that rate where it should be? We also need to look at some of the, although we did get a good thing in the SOA with the growth and the WIDA for English language learners, I think there's a little bit more that we could do some advocacy on about how particularly around our SCIF students, our students with formal interrupted education, how that is being shown in that growth model. So those would be the main big ones. And if I'm forgetting some, Betris, please add. But dropout and the supports for our English language learner, and we're going to get into some of that next Monday. But those are the two main ones that I can think of right now.
Dr. Ivy, did you have something you wanted to?
I just wanted to add that one of the things that is just so special about this program is the continuous monitoring that goes on in each of the schools. If you look at the data reports that we receive on a regular basis, it's like none other across the state. And so in our schools where we may have made a leadership changes, we are monitoring very, very closely how, you know, how those, how the schools are going, how, what the student achievement levels are for the various content areas and grades and where might we need to make adjustments? And having that school support, EP and the team in each region has been very beneficial. And we're making adjustments. In fact, today, our regions, we looked at how they have tiered their schools and the question that we asked, are, has that tiered change? Are there any changes that we need to make in identifying schools and deploying resources? This is new for some regions and we are trying to make sure we have the right balance across all regions and where might we need to add supports? And what's so special is that Dr. Braybrand has asked consistently, you know, what more, what else might we need? Are we, how might we be more effective? And that is something that we're monitoring very, very closely.
Thank you, Dr. Ivy. I'm going to go to Mrs. Strauss to be followed by Ms. Kies-Gamora and Ms. Palchak.
First of all, this is just an amazing accomplishment. I think you all are to be celebrated. And I, and I think of, and this really was over three superintendents and I think of some of the, some of the changes that we've made that were very hard to change. One was convincing people that embedded professional development in instructional coaches. We had to fight to keep the funding and the budgets, probably before any of you were born. But that was a tough fight and I'm glad that we, we kept that in because that was a significant cost. It was at a time when we didn't have the money. The concept of team-created assessments for learning are common assessments. When they first introduced that, there was huge dislike. And then of course, the, the technology and the, and the, the data analysis that has enabled you to, as, as Dr. Ivy was saying, the, the, oops, continuous study of how we are doing. And the, the way, the way the, the support teams have been configured to meet the team, the, the needs. But it is just phenomenal, the success that you guys have brought. I spent the last couple of weeks spending a lot of time in schools. And what is really very exciting for the first time from listening to what you all have to say, I could go into schools and I could see it. I could sit in a classroom and I could watch teachers working together. I could watch an instructional coach do a modeling lesson. I can see the work of the kids. It was just, I was just blown away. It was, it really felt good. Now, my one question is when you began going into a school, say in September, because I, I would love to go with the team. I've never had that chance. I probably wouldn't really want to have a school board member to go anyway. Exactly what does that look like on your first walk-through in a school? Let's say you're going to look at reading language arts in, you know, primary grade. What do you look for? How many of you go in? How long? I mean, just, I'd like to picture that. And so I was doing a theater review, put me in the front row seat.
All right, I'm going to start and then I'm going to turn it over to Brendan because that's really his, his expertise. You know, first, it comes to light either from the region or from data that the school has an issue. So typically, either myself or the, one of the executive principals for school improvement or the RAS will reach out and tell the principal, hey, you're going to be in Project Momentum. You're going to be an intensive or targeted school. We're going to do a kind of a setup meeting. And then I will go out typically with either Stephanie or Jennifer. We'll meet with the principal. We'll talk a little bit about the structure. What are the supports you're going to get? What's it going to kind of look like? Then we get into the initial, the kickoff meeting when kind of the troops come in and we all show up for the first time. And I'll let Brendan talk a little bit about that experience because he's probably done it the most.
So the first meeting, we're trying to figure out what's going on and figure out what the principal is able to identify the needs for support. And so typically that does involve classroom walkthroughs. Every time we go to a school for, for a meeting, a monthly meeting if you're intensive, a quarterly meeting if you're targeted, we want to go see the classrooms because that's where the action is. And so the things that I look for are, are there learning targets? Is there evidence that the teacher's planned, knows what they're doing? That the teacher's actively engaged with the kids? I, I call it being gainfully employed. Sometimes we have like multiple adults in a room and sometimes not everybody's gainfully employed. Meaning like, somebody could be like a volunteer. You wouldn't quite know that they have a badge. So I want to make sure everybody's doing something with kids appropriately. We also want to see that the, the task is, matches the standard, that they're doing grade level appropriate work, that it's aligned to what we're asking kids to be able to show and do at the end of the year on a state assessment or reading assessment or DRA or MR, whatever it might be. We want to see that there's high levels of rigor, that it's not just simple fill in the blank, paste, coloring, gluing, not low-level stuff, but high-level stuff that's going to expand kids' learning. Maybe that's a PBL or maybe that's sitting and responding to a question that the teachers posed. We want to see that there's good management, good classroom environment, safe space, responsive classroom or positive behavior support, that the kids are well managed. And then when we leave that classroom and we go somewhere else, we want to see that the rest of the grade level is doing similar. Because sometimes we could have one really strong instructional practice in a team, but not everybody else. So we want to try to reduce the, the zip code lottery, you know, depending on your zip code, what kind of school you get. We want to not, not have that risk that one teacher at Clint's school is awesome for fourth grade, but the other ones, eh, I'm not sure. We want to, we want to align and elevate, compress and elevate. So those are the things we look for. We might come back to the room and talk to the principal and say, this is what we observed, what are you thinking? What kind of support do you need? We typically do not give feedback to the teachers. So we don't say, you're not doing a good job. That's not our job. Our job is talk to the principal and say, Sean, hey, I think you might want to think about some support you might need to give this teacher because it seemed like this thing was going on. However, that said, if a teacher makes a total turnaround or there's tons to praise, we might give that praise. And actually for Sean's school, after his writing scores came in, I personally went on behalf of Fabio and Penny and myself to go meet with his eighth grade language arts teachers to compliment them that they had raised their writing scores so highly. And they'd worked really hard and we acknowledged that. And they, they were appreciative, I think.
Great.
I hope.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kies-Gamora to be followed by, oh, Dr. Ivy?
Just wanted to add something else that we look for that, and we recently experienced it. We went to Glasgow as several members of the leadership team and had an opportunity to visit classrooms and walk through. And one thing that I was so impressed with, I was assigned the sixth grade and I went to three classrooms. One was self-contained, another was AAP and a third was the Gen Ed class. And to see how they were aligned, instruction looked different, but they were aligned with what they were teaching and the standards. And all three classes were extremely rigorous. And so that's something that I think all of us, when we think about Portrait of a Graduate and equity and rigor, that is something that we're striving at across. that is something that we're striving at across all classrooms and grade levels in the county.
Thank you. Ms. Kies-Gamora?
Well, I thank everybody for being here and I'm grateful that this program exists, that we had an opportunity to expand it. And one of the things I think Dr. Ivy mentioned, I think it was you who said that, that there's a hallmark of constant monitoring, which I think is extremely valuable. One of the things I didn't notice in the numbers was, you know, a breakdown of, you know, how many special education children, you know, what the challenges might be in some of those schools with those numbers because that could inform us as to what we're looking at with respect to what you've accomplished because it's actually based on growth. I'm starting to talk too much, okay. So I would like to, I would like to see, for example, with special education, you've had an opportunity to really go in and evaluate and develop and look at what best practices are. Are we actually using what you're learning to inform professional development? To inform what, what else we're doing in, in FCPS for those who are not able to be included in project momentum? I would, using the same principle, I don't know if you've ever had to look at things like discipline issues and attendance and how you're dealing with that and then using that to inform how the rest of us are getting things done well.
Two excellent points. So first, in terms of have we looked at the individual gaps? We certainly have. And I, and as a reminder, all the board members, the, the gap detail is in the information that I gave you. So if you have any of that or need anything further, please let me know. In terms of special education, I think we're making great strides in that. As I mentioned, the partnership between Teresa Johnson and DSS and OSS is outstanding. We are really trying to make sure that we're raising the level of tier-one instruction for all kids. And what I mean by tier-one instruction, that base level classroom instruction. We need to make sure that our best teachers are with our most challenging students. And that doesn't always happen because of certification issues, how hard it is to get folks. And I think one of the things the new teams have been able to do, because there's a special education expert on each one of them, is to go out and provide some additional training and support to those schools with the biggest gaps in, in special ed. It is not universal yet. That is our biggest need. That is something that I know, and Teresa can certainly speak to it back there better than I can, that we are continually trying to develop and refine. This is the, the most resources we've ever had in terms of getting out and being able to go address those gaps at a specific school. They are probably the five most busy, the busiest folks on, on those teams because again, there's a high need in every region to go in and work on that. But I think we have a, a long-term plan of building the collective capacity of all our folks around the needs of special ed, really making sure that again, the teachers that we get, we provide opportunities for them to get that base level training so they can offer good, solid classroom instruction. And then I think one of the neatest parts is that, how then do they help in those other areas? Because DSS has all kind of support structures for behavior, for attendance, all those different pieces. And this person actually acts as a liaison. So when they notice there's an issue that's outside of classroom instruction that they may not have the expertise in, they then link directly up with the experts in DSS and have them to come out and help support. That's a, a lot of theory, right? We are, we're, we're three months into this adventure and we have a lot to refine in that. But I think because the working relationship is so good, that we are moving in the, in the right direction. The interesting thing, to your point about, you know, whether it's behavioral or whether it's attendance, you know, we have two principals up here that went about their restructuring in very different ways. And I remember I was all over Amy when she first started. I was like, you got it, we got to get those scores up. We got to focus on instruction. And she said, I got to get the discipline under control so kids can learn before we do anything. And she spent the better part of a year and, you know, at, at some risk because, you know, when you take over a project momentum intensive school, there's a lot of pressure to get out and get out quick. And the change in what she did was absolutely dramatic. It was absolutely the right thing. Clint's venture was a little bit different. He, he did things through the community and built up the community relationship and the community partnership at a phenomenal level that was never done before at Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School. That's how he attacked it to start as one of his key pieces. So we absolutely are looking at multiple ways to get in. And that really gets into that whole MTSS, our multi-tiered systems of support. How are we going to branch that out, grow that and learn about it? So there's a lot of learning that we still have to do in, in that area. But, you know, maybe they can highlight those one or, one or two situations that that is what you did.
So that is what I did year one, thinking about that multi-tiered systems of support. It was a risk. It was a big risk, but it was one that was needed. And I thought we got to focus in on positive learning environments, student behavior. We have to get kids in classrooms, in seats, ready to learn. So our year was all about accessing our behavior intervention teacher and all the behavior supports that DSS provides to really do some real-time, on-target teacher training, both, you know, around how to build relationships with kids who come to us with many, 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 many different backgrounds. And also how to respond to kids in need and understanding that crisis cycle and how to be proactive. And that's really what year one looked like for us. The, the drop in discipline referrals was amazing. And it really set us up so that we could have great success year two, where we really saw a huge pop in academic achievement. So I don't think I would do it differently to do it again because you have to have that positive learning environment.
Great, thank you. Ms. Palchuk to be followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. And thank you again to all, all the principals here and to Mark and your team and Dr. Duran. I think my main question is one Ms. Kies-Gamora asked, which is around the special ed because I know you've been doing this work for a while. And I'm grateful that the state is now forcing us to look at the gaps. And we're, we're starting to see some areas that really popped out, I think, across the county, especially related to special ed. So my first question, you addressed some of that and then I had additional questions. And I guess, A, you know, just, I'd love to continue to get updates as how we refine, you know, you refine your work to try to address our special needs, which look different, right? It's not all one special need. It's very, it's very diverse. And I guess one question is, do you see a need, I think you may have mentioned this, to increase training for non-special ed staff? You know, who are supporting students, A, general ed students and B, special ed students in their classrooms? So that's something that I've kind of heard and would like to hear more about after I get all my questions out. And then when we talk about cultural change, which to me is huge and really important and also means a lot of different things and probably needs some definition. So I guess from Clint talking about, you know, cultural change in your school, and I love hearing all specialists have to work with children. So I guess, A, is this something, are we seeing certain changes that have happened in project momentum schools like that? Like, you know, addressing discipline, you know, lowering effective filter, having kids feel, you know, supported at school, the community, parent leadership? Are you seeing some things in your project momentum work that we're starting to develop a model that we can define and implement more across the board? So for that whole child, for what do we, we mean by cultural change within our community, within our, you know, faculty, staff, but then the wider cultural change? Kind of what, what, if we can start to define that? I think that, I'd find that really helpful. And then finally, a question for you because I know we start to look at assessments or SOLs. Generally is what we're looking at here. Are you looking at earlier assessments that we do in earlier grades to start to see, you know, support that is working or that maybe needs refining before kids get to third grade and fourth grade and fifth grade? So if you could tell us more about that, the variety of assessments we look at?
All right, I'm going to take the last one and then I'm going to pass it over to Clint and then let Teresa chime in because we definitely will be providing more training and we are providing training to not only the classroom teacher, but the special education specialist in the areas of special ed and what needs to be done. In terms of the assessments, you know, we really, we've come a long way and it's, I think I still got the arrows in me to prove it. In terms of our own county assessment. So now we actually give all schools a assessment in Horizon from third grade through eighth. And we give it in the end of, end of November, first week in December. So that we can get, and it's based on state standards. So we can get an idea on how are those schools and those kids doing? And we can be very proactive and get them the help that they needed. In terms of the earlier grades, you know, we use DRA, we use the universal screener. Individual principals have different ways of monitoring reading growth in their schools. And I think that's been very, very positive and they're taking a very proactive approach. And I think that's why we're also seeing some of the gains that we're seeing. So I think we have to continue to work on what are the best early intervention detection pieces? I don't know if we necessarily have that totally figured out in Fairfax, to be honest with you. And I know that we're going to continue to look at some different systems or different screeners out there to figure out what, what is the best early detection thing we can find. I do think from the SOL perspective, our e-card assessments in Horizon are excellent. And they've really helped us to move in real-time supports from one school to another based on our analysis of those, of those results. And I think that's been really positive.
So my entry point into Mount Vernon Woods was really based on one piece of data that I stumbled upon at the early stages. And that was that in FCPS, the Mount Vernon Woods community had one of the largest CPS phone call logs. But the least accessibility to the services that are offered through not just the school division, but Fairfax County as a whole. And so my entry point was really based on, one, how do we address the issue of food scarcity? And we spent a lot of time around that. That was my way to get the community to buy and come back into the school. So in my previous work, I did a lot of work around community engagement and a lot of work with No Kid Hungry, a lot of work with the Capital Area Food Bank. And because of those partnerships, I was able to establish the family market at our school. I was able to establish alternate supper meals that were paid by business partners. So what that did was it gave our parents a belief and a trust in that we are addressing their needs. And that opened the doors. And once we opened the doors on that level, it gave us the opportunity to have some real discussions about instruction, about what was going on with their kids. To now where I created, created a principal advisory council that meets an hour before our food market. And we have 40, 50 parents every single month. And what we do there is we really open the forum to share with them the things that we are doing, but also to solicit ideas and suggestions on how we can be better to serve in them. And so that led to what we just did about a week ago, a week or two ago, to opening the first community school model in FCPS with Whitman and Mount Vernon Woods. And I think it started there. And it's about really meeting people where they are and bringing them into the building. And in reference to the staff, you know, we, I had always heard about, I think one of my teachers said to me, you know, I've been here for 15 years and I haven't been able to make friends. Can't make friends. I said, why? And he said, because every single year, half the staff is gone. So I can't make friends. And what I can say to you is that for the last two years, not only did we open the school fully staff for the first time in about 15 years, twice, but we also were able to retain over 92% of our staff. And it's really about a culture. And it's really about just having fun and engaging teachers, empowering them. I think Dr. Ivy was at our school a couple of weeks back and she said, when you walk in, you could feel the culture in the hallway. You could feel it with the kids in the classroom, the way they interact with teachers. And it's part of my responsibility is to make sure I set the tone on that level. And so my interaction with the staff, the way I go about my business, it's something that we just do. It's just to build a culture of acceptance, collaboration, and most importantly, doing what's best for kids.
Thank you.
Patty, can I just end it up one second?
Sure.
I do think there's one other thing that, to this point, I, not only am I a project momentum intensive principal, but I send my students to a project momentum school. And I do think that there's something that needs to be said as well here is that, Patty, I think you asked a great question when you were asking about Portrait of a Graduate and levels of academic task. And I, I want to make sure that something is said tonight that, I don't know if the right question has been asked, but that what I really love about sending my kids to Woodley Hills, and shout out to Sharon Aldridge and all the work that she does, is not only it is she work in partnership with the Office of School Support and her region, but that she's able to, if she has needs to meet her, the school community, that this partnership, she can get what she needs. All she has to do and ask. I will also say too, that there might, there's perceptions that I face as a principal when they're asking that, being a project momentum intensive school or being a project momentum school or such as a diverse school at that, that kids in those schools don't have access to the same high-quality academic tasks and levels of thinking that happen in other schools. And there's nothing that can be farther from the truth. What I really actually love about sending my students to Woodley Hills, or my students, my, my children to Woodley Hills, is that I know that's happening. There's an accountability piece and a support piece that goes along with it to the point where, you know, my, my daughter scored two in her third grade year, her fourth grade year, whatever grade she's in. She, just kidding, she's in fifth grade. And fourth grade, you know, she scored two perfect on her SOLs. I do think it is, we do also need to say that it's not only about taking students who, we have some significant challenges and this is how we address these challenges, but it also is when it comes to providing quality instruction at the tier-one level, it is the rising tide that lifts all boats. And my daughter is part of that tide. And I will tell you, in, at Glasgow, the same thing is evident. This is not a situation where, hey, only our Hispanic or our black students or our student, L students are disadvantaged. At Glasgow this previous year, in every category, in every subgroup, we went up. This is the rising tide that lifts all boats. And I just want to make sure, we're coming up on eight o'clock. I just wanted to make sure I said that before we get time.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it. Ms. McLaughlin?
Great. So first thing I want to say is the testimonials coming from the principals tonight has just been outstanding. My colleagues know that I have a master's in social work and what drew me to my service on the board is because I wanted to see how we could ensure that we educate the whole child. And I had pulled up on my laptop, the whole, or the iPad, the issue of Maslow's higher need. And you're speaking to that. For those of you who've probably heard it referenced, if not, it's M-A-S-L-O-W. Go look it up again because what you see in that pyramid about need is what you're describing. Once we meet their basic needs, and that is food insecurity, that is also knowing that there's food, that there's shelter, that there's transportation to be able to get where you need, that there are people in the building who care. So your discipline and your attendance, those are all going to go up. And it's not just that students know you care, it's that your employees know that you care. And so when we have this project momentum work, and what I'm hearing over and over again is you're creating a learning environment that then goes to the top of the pyramid, which is now we can start doing things like the critical thinking and we can be looking at ways in which we can thrive and achieve. And so tonight is certainly a very inspiring presentation. So I, I wanted to just really lead off with that. Mark Greenfelder, you've been hearing me for years since you were a principal at West Springfield when I joined the board seven years ago. You have been such a remarkable educator, so data-driven. And once again tonight, just being a great leader at demonstrating how you and your team and everybody working here together with FCPS leadership, this is, in my mind, the ways that we demonstrate beyond the lofty words, beyond the promises that we want to make to our community. But it's being able to say, okay, this is, this is actually how we're going to accomplish it. And so, you know, kudos to every person involved in this work. In terms of my questions, I will just say this since I got my signal. I would ideally- I would ideally love to see a report versus a PowerPoint. I think that specifically slides 20, 21, and 26, there's still a lot of definitions in there, including MTSS, that even for the layperson, the public, looking at this, they're not going to get the depth and the appreciation for what we're talking about. So I'm going to ask that more, Ms. Evans, in terms of next steps, rather than anybody needing to answer to it now. I think if we can get a little bit more of that information in the next step, it will also help us as a board be able to speak to this with some substance. And then finally, I just want to say to Clint, I am just so incredibly excited that you are pioneering one of our community schools. You are a perfect leader for that. Ms. Kofax and I, on the Skipped Successful Children Youth Policy Team with Francisco Duran and many others, this has been what we've been wanting to drive. And you've just put it into words tonight. And it's just, thank you to all the principals. And Sean, thank you for going from TJ over to Glasgow and bringing your great leadership, because that was a big leap from the TJ population to one of our other schools, and it's fantastic to see you doing that work.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, and I have that down for a next step. We have the two meeting managers to have some quick comments, and I have one quick go-back, and then we'll wrap up. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. Honestly, this is really an amazing presentation, and I kind of feel like I'm standing in the glow of a bunch of truly exceptional educators. So thank you so much for this effort and for what you guys are doing, and where you, the vision you have going into the future. I particularly want to just, slide 24 is just kind of mind-blowing, that you took the number of not fully accredited schools down from 18, is it one? Is that where we're at? Yeah, it's just, that's just an amazing presentation slide there. And I really think that, you know, everybody needs to give yourself another pat on the back, and their whole team, Mark, really, and Francisco, that you guys, the efforts you guys have put in to do this and make it happen. I think it's so exciting to think that you're going to roll this out and more fully implemented across the entire system, it's just fantastic news.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I will have just a few comments and then two questions. First of all, again, congratulations, this is just phenomenal work, and we have seen it grow, and we have seen it prosper, and I just couldn't be more excited about the project momentum work, so congratulations to all of you. I do think moving forward, we are going to see huge challenges in terms of the absenteeism, in terms of dropouts, and particularly at our schools where we have a lot of new students to this country, and particularly when we have older and new and non-English-speaking students, our students with interrupted formal education. So I will look forward to what you want us to advocate for legislatively. And that also brings me to an issue that I believe Ms. Corbett Sanders alluded to. I see that we're, with the secondary schools, you're talking about having something for all of the secondary schools. I do hope we don't lose the focus to the neediest schools, though. I think it's absolutely critical that those with the most challenges, with the neediest schools and the most challenged kids, that we make sure that we have the very intensive support. So I think it's important that we don't lose sight of that. Mr. Mitchell, I so appreciate you going through the cultural change, and Mr. Rose too, I think, and I'm sure that this is true at all of your schools. I think that's something, and when you talk about looking at the discipline first, I think that's something that can guide us for a number of our schools. One of the issues that I brought up in a different context was something called handle with care. And so I don't know if you've heard of this, but this is where schools learned that if there is a trauma in the household, they wouldn't necessarily learn what it was, but you would simply know that a child had had a trauma. And I, so I think that's something that we need to advocate for at the state level as well. And then my, so my one, two questions, and this can be a next step, is going back to the secondary school, how are we going to make sure that we support the neediest schools when we're supporting all of the schools? And the other one is a technical question, which I would just like an answer to in writing, and that's more specifics on how growth is measured. You know, is, if that's an average to an average, if it's kid per, you know, this kid and this kid, I'd just like to get the formula for that. And with that, those are, those are actually next steps, so I am going to go to Ms. Kizgimara, who I believe had a question in a next step.
Right.
And then we'll go to all of our next steps.
Okay, I think it'll be, well, just one comment, I was glad that Mount Vernon Woods, I'm sorry, represent, I don't remember your name, I'm sorry, you got a chance to tell me, because I was going to, that was part of my question, I was like, wait, Mr. Mitchell, I'm sorry, didn't get the chance to tell me, but you went back to that. So I'm going to add to the next step of Ms. McLaughlin, which is that information, we need more details on what growth means, greater breakdown of what students are involved. I'm looking on page 35. You can see, you know, Mount Vernon Woods has had some significant challenges, but I don't know what those numbers mean. Like, you said, what did you say, 67%? You gave some statistic of your students, but that's not, looking at this, I have no idea what you're dealing with, right? So it would, I think it would be helpful in your, even in your presentation, for, people are not looking at all things created, all things equal, going from school to school. So that's significant, one, that they understand how much growth is taking place, and also where those kids came from. I'm talking about demographics and anything else. For example, she listed out that there were particular discipline issues, which I, thank you so much for saying that, I was fishing and you grabbed the hook, so. But oftentimes, if you don't deal with those issues, obviously, education isn't happening, the child isn't available for learning. So the more details you can give like that, and then overall, I just wanted to challenge us to utilize the things that you're discovering to inform the rest of us.
Madam Clerk, could you put up the next steps, and then we'll wrap it up with a huge thank you to our guests for coming here tonight. All right, Ms. Corbett Sanders, evaluate if structure of regions is balanced in terms of need, does that capture what you want to ask? Okay, can I see a show of hands, how many can support asking for that? I think that was a, was that a, okay, let me see, see a show of hands, who can support that, one, two, three, four, five, okay, that's a majority.
Ms. Evans? Just a quick point of clarification, however, just because I want to make sure staff and we are all clear on what that first one means. Evaluate if structure of regions is balanced in terms of need, so maybe, Ms. Corbett Sanders, what you mean by structure?
Certain, we have a concentration of the highest need schools within regions. Some of those regions are fairly elongated, and so rather than having a concentration of the highest need schools in two specific regions, that it may be more appropriate to restructure the regions so we balance out the support. Because we now have, with the restructuring of project momentum and the equity teams, we have the same amount of staff in each region, supporting the schools. So if certain regions have a higher need, then we're actually providing per capita less support.
Right, so what I guess...
Do you understand what is being asked?
I guess I, I'm just, what I'm hearing is, it's the composition of the schools within each of the regions. It's not, I mean, it's structured just...
It's the composition of the regions, not composition of the schools. So if a region has...
Yes, it's the composition of the region in terms of the schools that are assigned, yep.
Okay, so Ms. McLaughlin, if you'd read the next two and see if that captures what you were, so prefer written report, are you suggesting this for the next time we get a report on project momentum, that it be a narrative rather than a PowerPoint?
I, yeah, I don't know, I needed anybody to put that up as the next step. I just wanted to, I mean, I wish Superintendent Brabham were here, because he's the guy, but I know we've got Dr. Ivy here, and, you know, Dr. Duran, everybody, and Mark, but yes, I do, my feeling is that, especially as Ms. Heinz said, it's great that we're going to be leaders. Well, you can't really lead on this if the public and other school divisions come, the PowerPoint isn't going to give them the...
So you're, so we don't need this as a next step, but your advocacy is that in the future, we have some narrative to explain some of the things that are in the PowerPoint.
The narrative is beneficial.
And I see Mr. Greenfelder nodding his head that he understands that point. So, and then in definitions, are you asking that that be added or for...
Yes, I definitely want that bullet, but it's not just definitions, Ms. Evans, it's definitions and descriptive summary, because some of...
To describe what it, what it's referencing.
Yeah, like multi-tiered systems of support protocols, what is that?
We got that.
So provide some, okay, so...
And can you add slide 23, just?
Can I see a show of hands, how many people can support that? Okay, that's fine. Advocate for handle with care program, that's my advocacy, I didn't actually get a...
Ms. Evans, can I suggest that it's handle with care and at the state level, and greater description of the Step Up for Children initiative, which has just been entered into between the county and the schools for providing supports to students that have faced trauma in their lives?
Okay, for the step, and so, you want to...
She just did that, so that it's...
Greater description of, okay.
Can I just clarify, is that something you want added as part of next Monday's conversation? With the legislative advocacy?
I think that probably should be part of our...
Because I'm not sure how we would respond, this relates to project momentum, even though it has implications for project momentum, but I want to be clear on what the...
Right, and so I guess I would, I can certainly bring this up on Monday. I guess I wouldn't mind having it captured here, because it does...
Or just put for Monday, you know, I don't know, but...
That's a good idea, why don't we say, you know, when discussing legislative package? And that, okay, so is there agreement to do that? Okay. Provide more specifics on growth, and that's just, I just want to know what that formula looks like, can I see a show of hands of how many folks are in agreement on that? Okay. And then, Ms. Kizgimara, does that capture what you were trying to do, what you were asking for?
That is, that is specifically what I was asking for, but I was using that as an example, I think, in its best, even in your presentation, if people understand what those numbers represent.
Okay, all right, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Ms. Kizgimara also talked about, and Ms. Palchuk followed up on it, the, how does, what, how are the best practices being learned in project momentum? How are we then translating those to inform best practices in non-project momentum schools? So that if we can capture that somehow in a future Brabham brief, a, you know, perhaps in some of the...
Aired for all schools?
Yeah.
Yeah, with all schools.
And if that could include academic, cultural, you know, sort of the whole wraparound services?
Cultural, special ed.
Special education, okay. Can I see a show of hands, how many can support that? Okay, very good, well, thank you so much, and did, Mr. Greenfelder, you look like you had something else you wanted to say before we thank you all.
I just wanted to say, just one real quick closing, you know, because I only come here once a year, so I got the mic. I just wanted to thank everybody, and I also wanted to make sure that the board, again, to reiterate, we all appreciate your support. This is collectively our work, it's not mine, it's not the Office of School Support's, there's multiple offices that are involved. The passion, this is what's doing it, it's these great leaders. You know, I'm in awe myself, when I look at the size and the scope and what they handle, I certainly don't know if I could do it, that's for sure, they are truly incredible leaders. And I did want to give one last shout-out, and then I'll be quiet. And this all started four years ago. I learned more in one year working for Debbie Tyler than I ever did for anybody else. And this is a lot of her work and her passion, and it's where I learned a lot of this. And when Teri Dade and I helped create this with Steve, a lot of the behind-the-scenes conversations, work, philosophy, came from Debbie.
Well, thank you all very much for joining us, this was an excellent presentation. We will take a three-minute break while we prepare for our next work session.